This is kind of phase one of those dollars. So really, we're presenting tonight is $100,000 of the $410 allotment from Representative Cruzack specifically for workforce development and manufacturing assistance. In your staff report, it's going to be a proposed collaborative partnership between the City of Tuolleton, OMEP, and the Tuolleton Chamber of Commerce for marketing capabilities. With that being said, this proposal is supposed to be a flexible program that provides scholarships to local manufacturers to cover contracted programs provided by OMEP. We hope that this program will focus on assisting as many companies transform for today's economy, or excuse me, tomorrow's economy, in a deep and impactful way. The program will focus on three key areas: business strategy, manufacturing operations, and workforce solutions. And before I turn it over, this program will be entirely administered from application to completion by OMEP.
Fantastic. And I thank you, Jonathan. I wanted to take a minute just to talk about how we got here to this to this point with working with Jonathan. Bob and I had spent some time working with Tuolleton businesses, getting to understand the needs and the challenges that they were having. And in doing so, we learned that there were a couple of pain points. And one of them was that there was no support for Tuolleton manufacturing for the kind of consulting services that we offer. We work with like Lane County, or we work with Business Oregon for rural initiatives. But in Tuolleton, there was sort of like a missing piece, right, which is support from the city. So Jonathan and I got together, you know, to kind of figure out, well, what can we do? What can be done? What are some of the opportunities that we have here? And how can we produce a reasonable and clear impact from the work that's done? And so then we came up with the idea of Tuolleton Made. We talked about some of the challenges that some of the 234 manufacturing companies we have here in Tuolleton are experiencing, and how we might be able to use our services to help them achieve growth revenue is one of the, one of the bigger things. But more importantly, how to engage their workforce, retain and attract talent here in Tuolleton. And a lot of those, you know, the pieces that Jonathan was talking about of strategy, I think it's on one of these slides here, next slide, please, of strategy, manufacturing operations, and workforce solutions, all three of those fit together. And so OMEP works in that, in that way to be able to deliver on those. I want to turn it over to Bob and just talk a little bit about how OMEP works and what makes us so unique? And what makes us capable of being kind of the solution for Tuolleton?
So very briefly, Jonathan mentioned the, the national network that OMEP is a part of. There is an MEP center like ours in every state, part of a national, somewhat federally and state subsidized, so we are not-for-profit. How we work, how we work in Oregon, we get, we get contacted via our website, via referrals, several different methods of, of contact. And our initial visit with a new prospective client typically will include a site visit, maybe a couple of site visits, talking with the people that are, that are doing the work every day about their struggles, their challenges, their aspirations for the business. And through lots of interaction back and forth, we get fairly close to what we think the way that OMEP might be able to help them. So we would then present a scope of work. And there's typically a little bit of back and forth around, we missed a couple of things, or it might be a little too expensive, or we wanted, we want to engage for a year instead of six months, you get the picture. And assuming that we can come to an agreement, we will then allocate one of our consultants, sometimes a couple, depending on the size of the project, to begin work. And having come from manufacturing industry before I joined OMEP, I've had, I'll say, an opportunity to work with a few different consulting companies. And my, my experience had been, you know, we hire a consulting company out of Chicago, they bring in a big team, they spend, they have six or eight people onsite, they spend a week or so, and then they make a big list of things that we need to do, and they fly off back to Chicago and send us an invoice. OMEP engages very differently than that. We call it drip irrigation. Our typical, our most typical engagement will be a half a day a week for six months, or sometimes a year. And we help dig into the real challenges and help identify problems and get real clarity around, oftentimes even after our initial visit, if we end up kind of going different directions, the more we learn. But, but the kicker is that we are there then through implementation. We'll start with what we agree on as the high priority problem area. We get to work, start implementation. And as you might imagine, once we get a few steps into implementation, it, it sometimes takes different turns. So that, that drip irrigation model is really, really effective. Sometimes it feels like we'd like to go faster, but faster isn't necessarily better in this, in this instance. Because going faster for the sake of going faster, sometimes we miss the real opportunities. So add in a nutshell is how, so then we go through implementation. And, and it's not uncommon that after a six-month engagement, client company will want to renew and maybe change focus to a different area. So that in a, in a brief summary is kind of how, from in, from initial introduction through execution, how it works.
And I would just add that along with that, we're stabilizing leadership. We're helping folks to kind of work together and engage with the challenges that they're having. Because we are being held to national standards, we have to, through a third-party survey, report back on the results and the impacts. So top-line growth is going to be one of those, job creation and job retention is going to be a really big part of that. But as Bob was saying, because we're in there with the business, working with leadership, we understand that job creation isn't just about creating the jobs. It's about creating the systems that allow those jobs to really stick and allow companies to attract and retain the right kind of talent, right? Because there are a couple of companies that Bob and I have been in where you bring great people in, but if you don't have ways to be able to show them what to do, the capacity to show them what, you know, a typical day will look like for them, by lunchtime, they leave and they're out the back door, right? And so this is creating a lot of instability for our businesses here in Tuolleton and throughout the state of Oregon. We know that working in, with companies is about a 30 to one return on investment. So when you partner with us, the company buys in and we create what Bob called is a service agreement. We know that in most cases, that's a 30 to one return on investments. So we create efficiencies within the organization so that, you know, things aren't being lost and there's greater capacity built. That's a really big piece of that. Again, more jobs, we're also creating investments. We're helping companies invest in the right equipment. That's a really big piece. And cost avoidance is another piece. There's love when companies are like, well, I'll just buy a new piece of equipment to get myself out of this problem, or more space. That's another one we hear quite a bit. And so what we can do is we can work through some of those challenges and help companies really look at that. And, you know, just to emphasize what Bob said, is all of our consultants, we have 25 consultants, they're all employed by OMEP. And we're out throughout the state of Oregon, we have, I would say, 50% within the Willamette Valley and accessible to Tuolleton businesses. Each of our consultants work shoulder to shoulder. That's why our engagements are six months long, because we don't want to just come in with a punch list and say, fourth and good luck, right? That's not what we do. There's also other ways that we engage with businesses, and there are lighter touch programs. They're the ones that I, I'm primarily I-house, and they're going to be our cohort learning. We know that companies may not necessarily be ready, willing, and able to work with us right away. Not a problem. There are smaller touch ways that we can create significant impacts. I learned about OMEP because I ran a small wheel building manufacturing business for 10 years in the city of Portland. And I was working 90 hours a week, really having trouble stabilizing my business. I took a business innovation workshop with OMEP, completely changed the way I ran my business, started working 35 hours a week. I mean, not initially, but eventually I got there. And I really fell in love with the methodology that OMEP was teaching, had a really big impact on my business, which is why I'm here today, because I realized that we can, we can do the same for other businesses. So cohort programs are a really great low-touch way to really support businesses and to help develop emerging leaders. We know that's a big part of workforce retention, is not just initially getting that person into the right role, but then giving them the tools and education to support them in that role as well. And so we want to give businesses a multitude of ways to engage with us. Miss anything?
I would add a note to your comment about the number of consultants we have on the team. It's not uncommon, within the team, there's a vast variety of skill sets. So it's not uncommon for me to get a couple of months down the path on a project and bump into something that I might be able to figure out, but I know that somebody else on the team carries a deeper skill set. And so we leverage that often, where I can call Justin, or John, or a variety of others that would be able to come in and apply some more specific and focused skills, which has been really, really helpful.
Yeah, team-based delivery is, is what we're all about. And it's a little bit different than setting up consultants to just, that are third parties, because our consultants are invested in the businesses and they're invested in OMEP's success as well. And I think that's what makes us a little bit unique. I think in the MEP National Network, obviously, there's one in every state, Oregon is ranked number two. So you have, I'm proud to say like a first-class MEP center working here.
So there will be a streamlined process that, this is directly lifted from OMEP's website.
It looks familiar to me, too.
I'm, I'm pretty good at PowerPoint. So they, the manufacturer will seek assistance. So the way that Jude and I got contacted is she emailed me and said, I have two companies, small manufacturing-based firms. We were struggling to find funding to help get them through some sort of cohort. Supply chain issues and workforce retention is those two issues. And we know that council's been asking for four years now for some sort of workforce program. And we have a great work source organization here in the state of Oregon. So we don't want to get in the sandbox and start kicking dust and cannibalizing the efforts of one group. They partner with WorkSource on a lot of issues. So what we were trying to figure out, okay, so in the meeting council priority, but also to meet a workforce need, how do we connect the two? Well, luckily, within the ARPA dollars, supply chain issues, any kind of COVID disruptions, workforce issues, education, site development, but also understanding that while we as a city have a value of living wage jobs, we also have to understand a dignified employment. And a lot of these don't pay what we would want in our community. But however, we have to have individuals at the sub and non-managerial level pay scale. And a lot of these, you know, they have the transition, they, they come in, they get onsite training for their skill, they go through PCC or CCC, then they go up through the system, whether internally of the organization, or they, what did they, they develop the skills and become competitive and go on to someplace else. And so what we're trying to do is show our community that while we have great manufacturers such as J, Lamb, and all those, we really want to focus and invest on our small and medium-sized manufacturers, because they do contain about 87% of our employment within our manufacturing. So I'll let you go through kind of the brief process of how a business comes and how they go on.
And Bob covered a significant part of this. And in the field, you're getting to see like how we actually work. It's typically consultants and I will work together. So Bob and I have worked on a lot of projects together. So it's a lot like this, where we'll, a manufacturer will come to us, and it'll either be, as Bob mentioned, through referrals, through a website, through a specific pain point that they're having, right? So they're generally coming to us because they've heard about us, or they're in a time of crisis, and they really just need a little bit of additional assistance. What we do is we go then and do an onsite no-charge assessment. And the assessment is there to help to understand and hear in their words the pain points and struggles that they are having. That's very, very important. It's also to validate that, you know, onsite, seeing where the work is happening, that that is actually what's going on. Someone, so many times we'll go in and someone will say, well, this is the problem, right? And then, you know, we'll ask like three or four questions later, and we'll be like, oh, actually, I don't think that that person showing up on time, or the challenge that you're having with this piece of machinery is, is the actual root cause of that problem. And then we can talk about, you know, what that looks like. A lot of times, we do two or three visits. We work, Bob and I worked with a Tuolleton company here for about four weeks. We invested, OMEP invested personally, probably about 20 to 24 hours of consultant time just to work with that company. And between each of the site visits, we were able to see kind of how they were thinking a little bit differently and what challenges were actually arising. We don't do that with every company, but we certainly do spend quite a bit of time in the assessment phase, because we want to build rapport with your companies. But we also want them to, we really want to get to the root cause before we get to work. Assessment phase, and then we develop a scope of work, as Bob mentioned. Then we'll understand and evaluate their current state. And this will be done typically through a value stream map, which will do order to cash. And in that process, what happens is consultants and the leadership team will identify the specific projects that they want to work on. And then the implementation steps are going to be the bulk of the work that we do, even though it's like the same size box as everything else. And that's where the consultant will show up typically a half a day a week for the next six months. Yeah, a lot of times it'll turn into a year, sometimes two years. Sometimes a company will take a break for a while and then call us back as they're scaling and expanding. And one of the more interesting things that I've noticed is that when you're working with someone kind of in that, in that space, they also start to become creative about what's possible for them in their business. And that's a really exciting time to be working with a business, because they're not just thinking about surviving this next step, but now actually, what can we do and how can we grow? Yeah?
Yeah. All right. So as I was saying earlier, we had two specific businesses that came to OMEP, and then OMEP came to the City of Tuolleton to kind of figure out where's funding possible. And so this is our proposal. We'll have $100,000 broken into two phases, a pilot program and then a second stage. The pilot program's intention is to kind of see if there's capacity or interest within the program. And we think there's going to be a lot of interest. So first and foremost, that should be pretty apparent. Second is if we continue going on with this program, we have another $50,000 within the year to deploy towards those efforts. As with ARPA dollars, it has to be set by December 31st, 2024. So we've, we've got a little wiggle room. But also, if this is an extremely successful program and it's making impacts, and we'll talk about the success matrix, we, we have the additional $250,000 from Representative Cruzack's dollars. The other $100,000 that's kind of being taken off is maybe some small business grants that will replenish. We'll come back to council with a particular program again for the remaining dollars. But we're still working with the county to get the scope of work. The state is still taking their time. So that's just a caveat to this program. So there's that. Second, in talking with Jude, we've focused on these five key areas and for success. So revenue growth, pretty self-explanatory, reduced expenditures, employees retained, employees hired, and wage growth. And so we're hoping within each of these kind of program scholarships that we tick off more than one. But if we can have a business that's stabilized and has revenue growth, it's a long-term business in the city of Tuolleton, that's property value, assessed value that comes with the city poppers, as well as income tax for the state of Oregon. So it's a double lanny for economic development, reduced expenditures, employees retained. I mean, we all know that the workforce issues right now is pretty astronomical for our businesses. And then also retaining those employees. There's a lot of cross-mobility within the metro area. And hopefully, a lot of, a lot of our employees are within a five-mile radius. So that also helps with transportation impacts. So if we can keep our employees more local, it reduces, like, it's just a cascading thing. And then also wage growth. And we know that's a priority for this council, but we also want people to make more money and to have a better life. So that is the first of our presentations. If you have any questions for myself or OMEP, we'll be more happy to take them.
Questions for Jude, Bob, or a couple of that, or John?
I have a few. First of all, you were, you, you mentioned two companies, but how many? I mean, 100,000 doesn't go very far. So how many companies do you think you could potentially help in, in estimate how many employees?
We think a minimum, we think that there's a couple of different ways that we want to serve companies. We want to serve in light touch, which might be the cohort programs that we have in business innovation, or lean fundamentals, or Tools for Conscious Leadership, which is our leadership cohort. We think that we'd be able to help between eight and 24 companies. And they would be partial scholarships or full scholarships. And we have a deep history of working with the city of Portland, Lane County, you know, different municipalities throughout the state of Oregon. So we feel confident that that's a, a pretty conservative number for us. Our goal is not to help one company with $100,000, right? Our goal is to make sure that we're growing and developing, you know, a rich culture of innovation. We want companies to come out of their silos and communicate with each other as well and share ideas.
Okay. And then on your five criteria, you have revenue growth, employees hired, wage growth. So I'm assuming by reduced expenditures, you mean more efficiencies? Because you're, and that was my other question, would, would you include in this program? Like, if you have revenue growth, then of course, you know, you have increased inventories, you have hired more people. So do you help kind of guide them to how to grow their companies once that they're successful?
Absolutely.
Because that, that can be a big hurdle for a small company.
For sure.
Okay. And then my last question is, when a company goes through this program, are there some measurement criteria at the end so we can see that this money was used wisely?
Every project that we engage in, Jude mentioned this third-party survey that is part of, it's a requirement for OMEP to participate in this national network, that, that will do a full survey that assesses impacts across that, between revenue and job growth to job retention, other investment in the business. What are some of the other impacts? There, there's a wide variety of measurables that frankly, we are held accountable to, to, to maintain our charter.
And council will get those. We, we've started talking back on the back end of, I, most of these companies are undisclosed just due to competitive issues. But we're, if they take dollars from the city, there'll be a specific survey that we want them to fill out in terms of impact. So you'll understand, okay, so we got to return maybe a four to one on the, on dollars.
And we know that revenue growth, when we talk about that, OMEP can talk about that through creating capacity, whether that's realized through sales or not. That's, and we can certainly go down a rabbit hole and talk about what that survey actually looks like and what it means for each company. But it generally means that we're talking about the capacity that we're able to create, create through efficiencies. And, you know, retaining a workforce, et cetera. And those are all costs, real costs that businesses have.
Right, well.
And we're specific to manufacturing, which makes us very unique.
Right.
Blanketed, you know, business growth and strategy. It's very specific to the challenges. I mean, we have folks on our team that specialize in just maintenance and machine operations, right? So just that piece of the puzzle alone is a huge value to our.
It sounds great to me.
Yeah, um, so let me just try to understand the process and Jonathan help me out as well. So we start with $100,000, and then that goes to OMEP, or, and then you reach out to the businesses, so they have to reach out to you. How do, how do businesses get ahold of you? And, or is there an outreach to the businesses?
So all of the of them.
Yeah. Sample.
So in, in speaking with Annalena from the chamber now, so we're going to start going through the chamber to their marketing, to their manufacturing, as well as capping on the CCIOs, just to try to like, what we, what did we call it? Soft touch, warm touch? Just trying to like, hey, there's an opportunity if you're struggling with these five key areas, longevity, workforce. A lot of times, businesses will come across OMEP and directly reach out to them. And then sometimes they may just come directly to the city or to the chamber and we'll guide them over to OMEP. But once they become in OMEP's orbit, that is completely within the orbit. So the chamber and the city will take the step back and just let OMEP do their thing.
And of the 234 manufacturing companies you have here, OMEP has probably a list of 60 that we've been in connection with. And so I'll be connecting with each company, you know, to find out how they're doing, where their struggles and pain points are. And we're going to get to learn a lot about, you know, potentially specific issues to Tuolleton. Though, you know, we've been doing this throughout the state of Oregon, and we have a general sense of what Oregon businesses are struggling with. So we'll count on warm leads from, from the city of Tuolleton, but we'll also reach back into our Rolodex and reconnect with them as well.
Um, thank you. And the other, I have several questions here. The other, you say you're going to go through the chamber, what if they're not members of the chamber? Can they still reach out to somebody at the city or, or, I want to make sure. Um, the other one would be, is there a specific industry that you're, that you focus on? Or is it all industry, like for instance, there's manufacturing, but some do technology, other ones are probably produce or food? We have a big food company in town. So I, I'm thinking, what, all the above? I know it's all the above, but I just want to hear a little bit more about what sector of the private industry do you, you feel like you can?
Anything and everything manufacturing, and sometimes even manufacturing adjacent. Some distribution companies and some warehousing companies that we've worked with. But anything you can imagine in manufacturing, we've likely spent some time in that sector. Certainly in food and metal shops and a lot of tech companies around the metro area. Wood products, it's a really, a really wide variety.
And what if their headquarters is not here, but their companies are here? Like, I'm, I'm thinking of food companies specifically here in town that their headquarters is like on the east coast, but they're big here in our town.
We, we work with companies that fit that, that scenario. It depends on the, the structure of the organization. Sometimes I can use one example where there's a local facility that was connected to a larger organization headquartered in Washington. As a courtesy, we will typically reach out to our MEP partners in Washington and, and say, we're engaging with this company. Your headquarters is in Spokane or wherever, and we'll just work with the local, the local facility. So it's still valued jobs locally and so forth.
So I can have a little bit of, I'm envisioning, so I'm a manager. Do you work with the managers? Do you work with the production? I mean, specifically who would be like a direct person you'd be communicating? Is it like the CEO or?
I can tell you the ideal scenario is to have full commitment engagement all the way to the, the top-level management. But that doesn't where the work starts and stops typically. It's, it's, as you might imagine, it's more successful often if the, all the way to the top is engaged and committed. But a lot of our local work will be on the shop floor with, with hourly folks that actually do the work. And again, it depends on the, the nature of the problem that we're helping them sort through. If it's strategy and financials, that's probably not as much shop floor folks. If it's manufacturing productivity or efficiency, it's, it's got to be on the shop floor. So it, it really varies. I'm sorry to keep saying it depends, but, but there's a wide variety of scenarios and engagements.
I think OMEP really prides itself too on being able to see the problem and not just present the same solutions, but really wrap and customize solutions to the thing that we're experiencing. In a given day or a given week, our consultants are either, you know, working in salsa manufacturing or we have some that are engaged in, you know, your typical like work environments, wood products, like cat- like cabinet doors. And then we have, you know, even distribution centers as Bob was saying. So we have a wide variety. If it can be transformed from one state into another state, it's considered manufacturing and that's what we see.
And final, final question. Once this one hundred thousand dollar run out, do people, do these companies need to have like a membership afterwards? Or what, what does that look like after? The, what is your commitment, I guess, term of the situation? I know you said fifty thousand first and a fifty thousand later, but I'm talking about like years. This is a three-year thing or a five-year thing or just a one-year thing?
So that'll be a policy decision for council after the end of the one hundred thousand dollar trial run. If this is a successful program. I've already been in conversation with Sherwood and Wilsonville to see if there could be like a, a sub-metro partnership. Because we do share a lot of the same manufacturing capabilities. And we've kind of briefly talked about conversations with Bruce and stuff like that. So if we come back and it's extremely successful, we hope to present council with a few options of how to keep a program like this going, because we don't want to create something and people really like, drop the anchor, be like, this is great for our community. And then there's no help. Now, it could, it might not be at the level of funding that we're proposing this time, but it could be one of those more targeted approaches that you have to really have some sort of need and benefit. And then also a return on investment for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Great question.
Hi, thank you for a nice presentation and another great idea from Jonathan.
This was her idea.
Could you, could you, do you understand the question?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Yeah, could you clarify that? I would, what you're asking just broadly is like, do we get the pulse of the business? And do we understand like where they are like in the bigger framework of a business, right? Because there's generally, or typically a life cycle for a business is what you're asking. I think that comes up, and I'll let Bob speak to that. That definitely comes up in, in the strategy aspects of that. I don't think that we phrase it in exactly the same way, because that, it might be a lot of information for a leadership team to hear and understand. But I think it's operating in the background as to how we're going to direct and support them. And ultimately, we have to be supporting businesses and helping businesses in the way that they define success, right? And so we're working together on that part. But I'm going to turn it over to Bob.
I think elements of what I heard there are certainly part of what we do. Maybe not as comprehensive as, as your thinking. But I've, I've engaged in a handful of projects with real focus on organizational structure and even things as, as basic as helping companies develop career ladders and development, internal development systems and programs. Because that's a, that's a huge element of, of retention, as you all probably know. But it's, it's, I guess, not surprising anymore. But at, at one point, it was surprising to me how many companies, when we ask about something like onboarding, new employee onboarding, would get the look like, what is that? And it's, it's, you know, so I could, I could go way down that rabbit hole and talk all afternoon. But did, did that answer your question?
I have a similar question. I'm just, I'm curious more about the whole range of outcome measures that you're looking at. Out of mind, deficiencies or are you really looking into organizational culture and things that can really be something to work through as a process? And I guess in that mode, how difficult are the, I know that some of these light touch ones, that's not where we're going, but some of the businesses might be experiencing greater challenges. Might need those kinds of examinations and interventions. I'm just curious around those types of things. And then if they, they saw that kind of need, if they wanted more services than what the city could do for outcomes, did they do their own, did they pitch in themselves for, for their consulting work? If they had some serious, like, things to do? So those are two questions.
So the second part, we, we, I don't know if we ever engage in a project where there isn't some investment from the client company. The, the giveaway projects just don't seem to have the same level of commitment and incentive. And, and then I think what I heard in your first question is the, the, maybe, maybe sounding cliche, but the, the most sustainable way to drive improvements even to margins or, or efficiencies are, is through development of leadership and culture. So we, I could say I, but I know it's across the board. We, that's where we commit. And a lot of our leadership guidance and coaching comes with that in mind. Not just how can we slash expenses to make to become more profitable? It's how do we build a culture to, to do it long-term?
And my final would say, and I think it's a really great start, especially if we have committed just to culture.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I just want to add that like when I'm, when Bob and I are going in to work on assessments, we're, we're getting an idea of where the organization is. They're culturally, are they ready, willing and able to work on their challenges? It's our job to be good stewards of the land that's provided, both from the federal government and from the city of Tuolumne. So we want to make sure that this is a company that can articulate what the challenge is. They're ready to work on it and they're open for either additional capacity to help on it or a new skill set. And that's actually a pretty, a pretty big piece. There are some projects that we've had to put on hold because we know the organization just isn't quite ready yet. So we're, we're really, we're not overly picky, but we do have a standard to be able to work with, because we want all projects to be successful.
No, I totally appreciate that. And that's where it kind of comes together to individual practice. We call it personal planning. We don't just do classes and cards to people. And the same with the complex issues and the business center and where we go to, we go as well.
Education and information. We, we can be compelling.
All right, thank you so much.
Good question. Thank you, Brian, could go right a little late.
I appreciate the concept of great, I mean, to understand how the pilot program works. Based on your experience, is there any sort of a timeline that you think of how long the pilot portion lasts? We theorize it would break if it lasted a very short time, because we have so many.
Yeah.
Will be.
This is a fantastic project. Wondering, because you mentioned if you had sixty-two or sixty-eight businesses out of our 234, some interactions with.
We'll get to work tomorrow.
So the two companies that initially, I think one's not quite ready that you're trying to figure that out. But it was going to be like twenty-five right there. So up to twenty-five. So I'm in.
Oh, just in terms of funding?
Yeah.
So that particular company, because there was a, a delay, they've gone through some pretty significant challenges. So, I mean, that's, it could be, it, it could be. And our goal would not be to fund just one company at a large amount, right? It's certainly, it's a tool in the toolbox to compel companies to begin to work on a particular project, right? There, there could be, you know, in the case of this company, it could be that we funded up to fifty percent. That's typically the most that we fund that to. But we have to go in and make sure that the scope of work is something that they, that they want to work on. But in terms of like, when, when does a pilot program start? And when can we start looking to see how we're doing? I, I mean, as soon as like I get the, the green light, I'm, I'm to work, right? And so what, what that looks like for me is re-engaging with some of those companies. We have a, a business innovation workshop and a series of cohorts that we'd like to put together. And because Tuolumne, because this is a newer program, we'll host them in the Tuolumne area, probably at the OMEP offices, and we'll do all of our outreach to Tuolumne. And there might be other companies that join from outside of Tuolumne that would not be funded by Tuolumne. But it would allow the, the cohort to be a little bit more robust. It's a little bit better when we have that company there. Yeah. But we'll be tracking everything for Tuolumne. I mean, our goal is to come back to say, let's, uh, let's have a, a tour of some of the projects, the successful projects that we've had and talk about some of the impacts and folks that have been able to see these results.
Other questions? Thank you both for coming and looking forward to the first engagement.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks for having us.
All right, so nothing that's going anywhere but Elaine Howard comes on up. Now we're up to the core update. Welcome Elaine.
Thank you. Sounds like a great program.
So this is the big enchilada for, for the year for me. So in, in spirit of time management, I'm going to kind of go quickly through the background, because we've, we've done this several times, but also in your staff report, there's a pretty, pretty in-depth breakdown. We are rounding the end of this process. So we are currently here on August 22nd. And this, what you agree to tonight will come before you on September 12th as the Tuolumne Development Commission, as the plan document, with the anticipation of an adoption by the end of November. Real quick, what is it? This has been a multi-year endeavor to securely position our community. We've done the HNA, we've done the EOA, we've done the housing strategy, we've done the housing needs assessment, et cetera. This is all bringing that together for fruition, for the funding of potential projects in the future. And the outcome of this is not the end-all be-all. This is just a financial plan document for you to work for over the next thirty years. And that document can change at any time, as long as it's not the maximum and death. We started in 2018 and we went through several years with Elaine as our captain with Urban Renewal. We've done a education series, we've closed Curd, we did feasibility studies. Last year, we did the Salt Creek and then now this year, we're rounding out with our area. Between the year of 2018 through the pandemic, with the small group briefings, with work sessions and with discussions with Cheryl and, you've indicated that more housing was a priority. Leave no existing businesses behind. Those that survived COVID, we want to make sure they continue to survive now that we're not in COVID, or at least not under the restrictions currently. Enhanced connectivity has long been a priority for the community transportation. Foster, create, enhance and promote identity or a community identity. What does that look like? Maintain and grow existing employment lands, that's from our HNA and EOA. And then economic prosperity for all. Make sure that all boats rise. And those values broke down at the time to eight key priorities from small business assistance all the way through environmental stewardship, which at the time was climate change. But because this is Tuolumne Development Commission, we kind of reoriented what that actually looked like through TIF. So more like built environment, preserving the environment, not the atmosphere type thing. And then transportation. This was the original feasibility study boundary. And this has went through a series of changes through our work group, through our community conversations with the chamber. We've had a couple of developer meetings, we've had a couple of community outreach meetings and CIO meetings. And the original intention of this area was keep all future development near major transportation networks. We understood that council, transportation was a key, congestion was a key. And so if any new development was going to occur, let's try to keep it as close to either Tuolumne Sherwood or I-5. That way it doesn't bleed into the residential areas. Enhance current employment lands. Our HNA and EOA indicated that we are a deficit of 286 acres for employment land. And with how UGBs are expanded, development occurs on greenfield, it's much easier to build up than build out. Prepare for regional major transportation projects. When we were initially doing this, we were preparing for the Southwest Corridor. Obviously enhance new connectivity and then obvious, obviously, that's twice now in one sentence. Remediate areas that are prone to environmental issues. Fund major infrastructure projects that prepare for future growth. And then all this was based on previous identified needs by the community. So tonight Elaine and I are asking you four key policy questions. Do you agree with the planned vision? Do you agree with the proposed goals and strategies and the example projects listed in between? There will be two community impact options. Which do you prefer with successes identified within those community impacts? And does council approve the proposed boundary? So the first, and I don't know how mayor, how you wish to break that down, so we could either do it at the beginning or in between or at the very end. But tonight, the initial, you saw the proposed vision several months ago and it was quite long. Through the work of our working group, we've come to this conclusion. This will be a guiding document for a community's efforts to strengthen the social, cultural and economic vitality of Central Tuolumne by funding projects that improve property values, eliminate existing and future blight and create an active civic. In working with Elaine and our working group, as well as a couple of presentations to our planning commission, Chamber of Commerce, commercial CIOs and our CIOs, we've landed on nine goals that this plan will focus on. So the first goal is blight remediation, which will encourage and facilitate the development of historically underutilized and vacant parcels and buildings through direct or public-private partnerships. Within your staff report, we've identified what the definition for historically blighted means, and that's more than five years. And this is also to convey to the community that we're intending to be strategic and partner with these developers. Any property that just recently became vacant or became vacant within the last one year is not a priority for Urban Renewal. Instead, we're looking at vacant parcels like 3.12 acres that are across from City Hall that's in the floodplain. Some prominent properties on Tuolumne Sherwood Road, as well as other opportunities that are in the floodplain that haven't been developed due to grading. And within this goal, there are five key strategies from dilapidated parcels all the way to encouraging growth in existing areas. And here are two example projects that we've identified through blight remediation. The 18970 Catalyst Project and flood mitigation efforts. Within your staff report, you'll also see that a lot of these projects meet several goals, because we wanted to tick off as much as possible in remediating the issues that council has identified over the last two years. The 18970 Catalyst Project was derived from two small group briefings that we had with you in 2021 that focused on, we want to be in control of how we want the city to look and how can we do that with things that we already own? And so in working with community development, we've decided that potentially, you know, obviously these projects can come and go based on council's priorities. But taking the red lot and the Hanigan lot and seeing if we can do some sort of multi-use development there that provides housing. So bottom floor. So bottom floor commercial, upper floor residential. We've allocated twelve point four million dollars to that project with the anticipation and hope that this is also a three-way project with a private property developer and potentially other bond funding measures that the region has also incorporated. And this is also to meet the highest and best use, which is what urban renewal requires us to do. Is a vacant lot the highest and best use? No. So how do we, how do we focus on that? And then two and three are flood mitigation efforts. Three point twelve acres at number two is basically all in the floodplain and that has sat vacant for a number of years. Number three was identified in twenty nineteen by Council Kellogg, but also by a couple of property business owners. There's a lot of flooding that occurs behind the Lazy Boy Furniture Shop. And then also within that area, that intersection is a safety concern. So we're looking at how do you prevent flooding, but also how do you prevent the transportation needs in the area as well? The commission's role on this will just be in participating in the local share of that. You know, any kind of flood mitigation efforts will be led by the public works. Here's what our current downtown looks like. As you can see, there's, there's a lot of potential in the area. And a potential rendition rendering of what could occur looks something like this. We could fund projects that provide housing, mixed-use development, anything that looks and meets the community's needs and also the community's desires, what it should look like. The eighteen nine seventy catalyst project is located right here on the corner of Seneca Nyberg and Tuolotin Sherwood Road. Taking those two lots, we could add a mixed-use development there that provides bottom floor commercial with upper floor residential. And right now, our intention is just to focus on those two lots. But if a developer proposal comes in that looks at larger development, we'll have that conversation with council and staff in the future. Goal two is enhance connectivity. We keep hearing from Tuolotin twenty forty all the way through our last working group session is we want a Main Street. What does that look like? How do we do that? So strategy one is try to develop some sort of Main Street corridor. And then everything else is still directly lifted from the bond funding measure focus as well as our transportation system improvement plan. Increase capacity, improve existing intersections and then also expand the area trail network, which is our parks and rent trails. So our Main Street corridor. There was a lot of proposals at our first working group, there was a proposal that we can't do based on our parks charter amendment. So how do we become innovative? And the innovation is taking a north to south approach instead of a west to east approach. That's taking eighty-ninth Avenue, or excuse me, eighty-fourth Avenue and connecting it to Tuolotin Sherwood Road and turning that more into a Main Street corridor. That goes in between C I's and Tuolotin Station and goes right beside the Tuolotin. No existing businesses will be displaced or anything like that. It's just creating an existing infrastructure that we already have and turning that into a Main Street. And how do we do that? That's where the area transportation plan comes in. And then also in our T S P does have the potential of connecting Seneca and Seneca Street. No, that's Nyberg, that's Nyberg. Connecting Nyberg all the way over to Tuolotin Sherwood Road through an existing parking lot. That that is in our T S P that could allow future development on that property as if that property owner would like to see that. So we want to make sure that we have the capacity to do innovative projects. But if those don't occur, that will be up to the property owner. But we want to be able to make sure that we're willing partners to do that if they want to do that. Our trail system construction, number five is both the Tuolotin River Greenway completion as well as the Nyberg Greenway. And we do know that you've added that into the parks bond fund measure. And so this could either be a cost sharing revenue with the urban renewal, that way your bond dollars go further. Or you. Make sure to use an urban renewal for something else. So we want to make sure that council has the capacity to do either or. Number six is access to multi-hindered areas. And this is something that we continually hear. Continually hear all the time. Number six is the area beside Dutch Brothers, that intersection. We keep hearing from our industrial neighbors, our employees have a hard time, our trucks have a hard time getting out. Dutch Brothers is busy, we we're glad for that. But how do we look at readjusting that intersection that doesn't displace businesses that makes the connectivity a lot easier? Number six, to the right of that, at the intersection of. Martin Ozzy and Lower Boones Ferry, no, Tuolotin Sherwood Road. Right there. I'll let Elaine do the. There's a addition of a right turn lane at Tuolotin Sherwood Road that's in our T S P. So we've taken and lifted that and put it in here. And then number six on the right-hand side. Is that intersection going from Lazy Boys into Best Buy? We continually hear that there's not a lot of space coming from the Lazy Boy and turning in from Nyberg. So how do we work to remedy a potential situation there? So we'll look at that. And adding money to figure out how to alleviate that intersectional issue. And then the area transportation plan. The city intends to do something for the entire city, but we're dedicating a hundred thousand dollars through urban renewal for this particular area. Multi-use development, this is to encourage and facilitate attainable multifamily housing. That's complementary to commercial development with expanded employment opportunities and lifestyle amenities. Based on your housing strategy, we've lifted a lot of those strategies from that document and then put them in here. Ensure land is available for development, support development and preservation of housing. Implement the catalyst project and then adjust planning efforts based on economic landscapes. We, we learned from twenty twenty that the economic landscape can change on a dime. And so we want to make sure that the Tuolotin Development Commission, as well as the city of Tuolotin, has the capacity to kind of pivot or readjustment. We've identified. Right at five and a half acres of opportunity that we want to partner with developers on. These are historically vacant and undeveloped land from everything from the greenfield right beside Kaiser all the way to the green field behind Legacy Meridian. There are two parcels up top, the old pig and pancake spot, as well as the two vacant parcels that are in front of Grand Central. Hotel, there's the three and a half acres right behind Tuolotin City Hall. There's Hagan's vacant storefront. There is the old Clark lumber, there are our spots of the red lot right beside the red lot, the Hannigan Lot. As well as the green field beside Fred Meyer. Right now, community development is working on phase one of the zone code update for industrial and employment lands for the Salt Creek. We intend to fund phase two within this area just to modernize the the development code to allow a more modern approach to what's allowed and what's not allowed in terms of use. Goal four is economic development, establish opportunities for entrepreneurial growth and economic vitality. Business assistance is key here is providing grant scholarships for capital development with business assistance. Urban renewal did that for our local businesses in twenty twenty using non-tax increment financing, which was the derived portion of like lands that we sold that were unrestricted. Because we called this out in our plan, we're allowed to now use TIF dollars for capital improvement, but it can't be used for like hiring employees. It has to, it has to provide value, assessed value on that property. So for example, window tree, like new windows, new capital development. Curd, our central urban renewal district did business assistance grants back in the day up to five thousand for facade improvements. And they retooled that right there at the end of twenty oh nine. So this is something the city has done before in the past. And then Zodeco changes is also our strategy, which also met goal three as well. Goal five, community identity. How do we cultivate a shared identity that represents the area's longstanding traditions and culture while fostering community connections and a healthy relationship to the environment? So more recreational opportunities and Ross and his team are doing a good job on trying to come up with ideas to implement those projects. And we're more than happy to help provide those kinds of fundings that foster economic development and community identity to those projects. And then we've added, based on a suggestion from our working group for implement a community design plan. We do have one from two thousand and two, but it's very outdated. And what that means is any new development that potentially could increase the assessed valuation of twenty percent or more of a property would have to meet the community design standards. So if there's a huge increase in assessed valuation, what does that look like? That's the type of materials that could be used for your facade. And so council will be able to directly determine what that looks like through that process. And obviously, we keep hearing downtown like a Swego, Arinko Station, and this is what we mean by community identity. Obviously, right now, I mean, obvious, this is obviously up in the air, but for location. But we wanted to make sure that Tuolotin River Plaza and Access Habitat Restoration Project was included into the urban renewal to meet our environmental stewardship, but also our community identity and economic development. And then the late addition, but it's still in your staff report, the community design master plan. How does that look? You know, what does that look and feel for our downtown? That will be something that community development will work with this council on beginning next year. Our remaining goals range from industrial development, public utilities, flood mitigation and environmental stewardship. These goals are not ranked in any priority, this is just how we're presenting them tonight. Projects can be changed yearly. So what we're presenting tonight and what can go into your plan document on September twelfth will be the plan that's adopted. But if there is a project or proposal that comes across that nature, goals and urban renewal, you can add that to the project list. We added in flood mitigation and wetland maps to make sure that we are preserving and protecting our natural environment. Most of our district study area that we're proposing for you tonight is not in a wetland. Most of the opportunities are also not the wetland. So I may, I misspoke at our working group last time and I said, oh yeah, I think we're developing, I think, a wetland and. I had to go back and make sure that that was not correct and it's not, that was my fault. So we provided these maps just to kind of give you an idea of what we're, you know, some of our environmental constraints. Flooding is an issue and that could be a huge portion of our efforts to maintain and prevent blight. And this is just a summary of our proposed projects. And then now I'm going to turn it over to Elaine to discuss impacts.
So we've been working on this project with Nick Poppenet of Haverius Solutions. And Nick does all of the financial analysis and has been working with us throughout this whole process. We looked at, finally, we had looked at a number of solutions as we went along, but at the end narrowed it down to two different potential impacts. So one is a low community impact, meaning spending less dollars, getting less done within the community, but still being able to do some impact. Under that scenario, you would have a maximum indebtedness of fifty-three million dollars over a twenty-one year timeframe, so a shorter timeframe. What that fifty-three million dollars in maximum indebtedness means in, the value of a project, looking at it in today's dollars is about thirty-nine million dollars worth of projects. So on the project list that you saw in your packet, and that was on the previous slide, would mean only being able to do a portion of those projects, not all of them. The major projects would be the Main Street Corridor and the Catalyst Project, the one eight nine seven oh. The success or anticipated outcomes would be to assist about ninety-eight businesses, to create nineteen to thirty-seven new housing units, one to eleven of those affordable. Seven percent of those opportunity areas would be improved. Wouldn't have funding for trail mileage and road mileage improved would be about point two six seven mile. So that was just looking at if you wanted to be very conservative about the use of urban renewal. That, that would be a low impact option. So this just goes through the anticipated funding over five-year incremental times. So the total net TIF or tax increment funds is higher than that maximum indebtedness number because it includes potential interests on bonds or loans. And that's not included in the maximum indebtedness figure. So the capacity over time is about thirty-eight point nine million dollars. Years one through five is about two point three million dollars. Your major projects would begin in years six through ten. That anticipates being able to do a bond sale or a major loan during that timeframe that would be paid off by the end of the district. Years eleven through fifteen would be about sixteen point three million dollars, sixteen through twenty-four point five. And then twenty-one is really just doing a little bit of funding in year twenty-one. So it's a shorter time period, less funding, but is able to do some of those major projects that we talked about. The other impact is a high community impact, so it's doing more to be able to improve the community than the other one. This would have a maximum indebtedness of one hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. And what that relates to in terms of funding for projects in today's dollars would be eighty-one million. So it's about fifty, a little forty million, a little more than forty million dollars more than the other program. This does have a duration of thirty years, so it goes from that twenty-one years up to a thirty-year program. The major projects that you would be able to undertake would be the Main Street Corridor, the Catalyst Project, the Tuolotin River Plaza Development and the Trail Development. The options, metrics, hope for would be businesses assisted one hundred and nineteen, housing units fifty-six to one hundred and twelve, affordable units one to forty-six. Percent of land improved from twenty-five to thirty-seven percent, just depending on how much you end up having to spend per development. Trail mileage built point seven miles and road mileage improved is the same point two six. So the total net tax increment revenues is one hundred and sixty-four about point six million. Again, the maximum indebtedness would be one hundred and thirty-nine million. The capacity in twenty twenty-three dollars would be a little over eighty-one million. You get a little more money in years one through five and then about the same in year six to ten because we're using the same boundary, the same assessed value. So really where you get that extra money is in that years twenty-one through thirty, where you're continuing to be able to pay debt service on loans or to have that annual increment coming in. When we originally did the financial feasibility study, and do we have a slide on that? We, we showed that the capacity was much higher. And in discussions with the working group and the, and with the city manager, decided that looking at a scenario that was closer to this scenario was a better scenario to look at in terms of working with your taxing district partners and the potential impacts on those partners, but still being able to have really effective impact within the area. So it scaled down from what? If you look at that full big boundary, that full big boundary had much more capacity. So the boundary area has been scaled down and then that results in the lower capacity. But from the different input that we received, that seemed to be more politically palatable to most people.
Yeah, the original capacity was a hundred and seventy-one.
So this just compares the, the two. So the difference is between thirty-nine million in today's dollars for projects versus about eighty-one million. The major difference in timeframe is twenty-one to thirty years. And you get more major projects out of. And you get more major projects out of, of course, the increased capacity. And you're able to assist more units to develop more housing units, to work with more businesses, and to improve more of those vacant lighted lands. So the proposed boundary is shown here. And do you want to work through that or do you want me to?
So the initial boundary included quadrant two, which is the area right here, the area beside Dix and Safeway. Bridgeport area included that area and the RV Park of Portland site. And so in working with city management as well as our working group and in conversations with some of our larger taxing jurisdiction partners, we've kind of settled on this proposed boundary from the initial larger one. It does remove Bridgeport Village. And the reason we did that is, one, the southwest corridor right now is not on track. Pardon the pun. But also recently, they implemented a $35 million renovation project. And so in kind of working with city finance, but also just kind of being a good partner that doesn't take the money out from both the city of Tuolatin as well as our partners, it would feel a little bit kind of disingenuous to take that money out of the coffers. So what I'm saying is the 35 million that's occurring right there in the center of Bridgeport is a huge renovation. If we'd have left that in, Urban Renewal would have gotten those dollars. So it would have taken it away from the city. It would have taken it away from, or at least the increment of that valuation. But it does still retain some of the areas that could be developed and needs a little tender loving care. Quadrant two, there really were no identified projects in the area. And so it's hard to justify incorporating a frozen base when you don't intend to do anything in the area. There is a stoplight that everyone has requested right there at Safeway, right before the railroad tracks because it's hard to get in and out and all that stuff. But we can't freeze over $40 million for a $1 million life. And so we kind of scaled that back. It removes the RV Park of Portland site. Even though we were doing this before anything, it's not adopted prior to the development. So the development's already occurred. So just like Bridgeport, we would be taking that money that really Urban Renewal didn't help foster. But we do add several areas to the new proposed district. We add Tuolatin Road. We add Martinazzi, we add 65th, and we add the easement for the Trail Development System as well as the community parks place for potential river access. The reason we add the expanded ridesaway is we want to provide the city of Tuolatin with funding mechanisms for any future identified problem with transportation on these roads. So in the future, if something happens and capacity's needed, but we don't have the TDTs to cover, we've got Urban Renewal to kind of look at providing transportation improvements. We also learned, giving you the option now instead of what we did with Levitan of trying to do a substantial amendment, add Herman Road, reorient the dollars to do the expansion projects that Urban Renewal is doing for the Herman Road Extension Project. So this is just kind of learning from what we did in the past and providing you with a foundation in the future where you don't have to worry about doing those things. And then the policy questions again. Does council agree with the proposed plan vision? Do you agree with the goals and strategies? Which impact option does council prefer? And does council approve the proposed boundary? And real quick, the next steps tonight is August 22nd. The council's having this workshop to help direct what the plan document is going to say and look like. That will be presented to you on September 12th through the Tuolatin Development Commission. The action will be just to recommend plan adoption and you will forward that to the planning commission and it will start the 45-day consultant confer immediately beginning on September 13th. We'll have our online open house and we've scheduled a couple of developer meetings already that will kind of, hey, we now have a plan. What's your idea? What's your focus? September 22nd will be the planning commission. And then November 12th will be the public hearing. And then November 28th will be the final adoption. The plan document that you will see on September 12th could look different than the plan document on November 12th due to public input, public feedback, consultant confer, all those type of things. But the document on November 12th will be the final document.
Included in your process, but not in this slide, are a meeting with the Plaquemines County Commission and a meeting with Washington County Commission. And neither of them have a responsibility to actually vote on the plan because it's all incorporated with the city. But by statute, you are required to give them a briefing. So that'll be scheduled in that process between September 22nd to the November 12th.
That was all. Thankfully, Councilor Sacco and I've been through this, so I may try to. You guys have been through more, but it was a great synopsis of the process. What I'll do is we'll go one by one, you know, through one through four. But before we do that, I just want to thank the folks who were on the working committee. Elaine and Jonathan did a great job facilitating the meetings over the last few months. Super informative. And the folks in the committee were very, very involved. Susan Nowak represented the chamber and our senior community. And there was a great discussion, I thought, you know, good points were brought up. So I want to thank everybody who was on it. When we went through all the maps and stuff like that, it was, I think, a terrific process. I want to thank you both for facilitating that. It was a lot of work over a bunch of time, but this is a great result of your work. So thank you. So start with number one, does council agree with the plan vision? As Jonathan mentioned, the original vision, people hated it. It was too long. And this was crafted by Jonathan and Elaine and the working group really liked it. And Councilor Sacco, feel free to pipe in too, since you were there too.
I mean, we did a great job summarizing. There was great feedback and I mean, you both had so much thrown at you as you were giving feedback. And just the end result that we're at tonight is really encompassing what the group did.
I like that it's streamed down. And first of all, I just want to say thank you too. This is really exciting and it's really great work. So I just want to talk about that before I start talking about little things. So for me, the little things are the environmental piece. And I'm just curious around like terms like resiliency or sustainable or if the term blight can be expanded into ideas around environmental issues. I wanted to say two things that come to my mind when we're looking at this from a overview contextual place. Just writing that article from the report from the Climate Action Plan, it was really interesting to me. And you guys nailed it, right, where we're going to end up with a lot more flooding. So the mitigation efforts are really strong for me. And I think that in some ways, the work that you're doing on that isn't reflected in that vision. And I think that it's a really important piece. The other thing that really stuck out to me in that article was that we have more carbon off-gassing from the buildings and from cars, which was amazing to me. And so I think that when we're talking about how we're going to do these improvements, should be thinking about green roofs and white roofs and those kinds of plannings that were more resilient. And it was funny when you said it, Jonathan, because you're like, we have it on the ground, but we're not talking about the air. And it's like, well, if you don't have the air, on the ground's going to look pretty bad because everything doesn't do very well without air. So and I think that people are sensitive around that, smoke and all that. So I just, I don't have the words for it, but I have the overall thoughts about that. And I think that, at least for me, so much of what you're doing reflects that to me that the people like me who leave that out and not at least have a nod to it would be missing some of the really great work.
I think that's a great point. And we can figure out how to address that. I think that's really important. And I don't know how we missed putting that in because it was something we knew was important to people. So thanks for bringing it up.
I guess that it's kind of on the same vein, but you have created an active civic corps and we're looking at adding housing in there too. So I would want to be sure that that includes not only the environmental, like maybe little small pockets of greens, like you were talking about the Kaiser, that little area and maybe like saving a little corner of that, a wetland or a little picnic here, you know? So there are green spaces where people are living. They don't have to go far to set at a little picnic table outdoors or something like that. And also the active civic corps, I'm wondering if, how much effort was put into, as we add this density, making it more bike and pedestrian friendly? Because that little, like right now, you were talking about that project and that Martinazzi? No, it's Blins Ferry, where you go into Tuolatin Park, that's pretty scary on a bike. So if you, we have people there, it'd be nice to make it so they would never have to get in their car if they were just staying, especially if they're just staying in that area.
The other thing when you were saying social and cultural, I also don't think I would be a very good advocate for arts, but even about thinking about arts. Social and cultural, so it doesn't have to be in the vision, but thinking about those things. We don't even have one art gallery. And it's something about it makes me a little interested in. And back to what Valerie and Councilor Pratt was talking about. I think that I noticed that too with the green spaces and thinking about native planting and sephras, but things that, ways where people can be in green spaces and foster healthy air with fires and with the, and that was the other thing that was really interesting in that report was the increase of pollen with the increasing temperatures and the increase of respiratory illnesses and heat fatigue and all that stuff. So I think that when we talk about a vital community, the people, the people's vitality is very important as well as the economic vitality, right? Health and wellbeing of our individuals, and here are the list of what we're doing. And I think that some of those kind of go in with that. And I think it's going to work great with everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only word that I would love to see is somehow engaged. Because I feel like engagement encompasses so much of what's going on, creating an active or an engaged civic corps. Maybe, probably that was discussed in the hours of time that you spent with the community. But if that word was overlooked, I just want to bring it up. Thank you.
Moving on to number two and 2A. Does council agree with the proposed goals and strategies and the proposed projects and investment allocations? Keep in mind, the allocations aren't set in stone. They can change over time. Councilor Brooks?
Right, right.
Folks are good with the goals and the strategies and the council numbers at this point right now.
And I think that you guys, can I say one thing? I think that you guys nailed it too, when we're talking about affordable housing, that that inclusive piece really important. Redevelopment plans, because the fear always is, you know, gentrification and displacement of people. So just that inclusivity piece somewhere in there.
That brings us to number three. Which impact option do you prefer, the lower, the high? I'll tell you, the citizen committee was going for the high because they wanted all that. One of the things that we did see tonight was the plan, if you would, that thick, long paper of the project planning of the options on the right, the time it will take, as Elaine mentioned, the dollars per year. And some of the folks on the committee were saying, are you serious? We've got to wait 10 years for Hagan to give you development? And Elaine's answer was, that's where the money's there. It takes time to build up that pot.
Better than it sits there for 20, right?
So what's the council's view on column eight versus column B? Councilor Brooks?
I'm for column B. I think that if we're going to do it and we're going to get the support behind us, we should do it in a way that we can get as much done as we can, people. Sometimes these halfway solutions are just, you know, it's all the stuff that people get frustrated with. Like, why do you do this as government and not do it all the way? And then I think it also lines us up better, and I've said this before, for additional funding. So the dollars would stretch more as well because there would be confidence in investors around what we're doing here. So I'm for being confident in that.
I just have a question about the administrative costs for like, oh, I think they were, maybe they were like 15% of the total and is that typical? Oh, maybe it was less.
It was higher on the smaller one compared to where they didn't match. Because they use the same amount. Administrative costs vary widely in the different plans in different cities where I work.
Okay.
But this administrative cost is anticipating, because you're doing more projects, that you're actually going to be paying for a staff position and that you're going to be paying for the time that the city manager and your finance director and other people spend on urban renewal activities. So it's because you're doing bigger things, it makes sense that you have someone to take care of it. If you don't, they won't happen. So.
And I think I'm hearing from what you were saying, even on the bigger one, that our city can absorb that loss of that tax increment in our budget.
So that's how we arrived at these, to these numbers, is what was comfortable with both the city and on taxing districts.
Yeah, we want to cover the rest of the city too.
Working with your finance director and.
Well, then I don't know. Yeah, I tend to think if we're going to do this, let's go for it myself. Let's do it as best we can.
So I've seen unanimous column B. President Gray?
So staff felt that the impact was preferred as well as the community.
And you feel our overlying, sorry, sorry. The overlying governmental entities will also be okay with this or likely to be?
Well, TVFNR was on our working group.
Okay.
They were very thankful that we started 171 million. We also have to realize that part of this area is also frozen for 30 years. So we want to be very respectful, but also with our own city finances and obligations. And so, yeah, we feel pretty confident with this number.
Okay, great.
For up to this number.
Item number three is decided, column B. All right, finally, item number four, does council approve the proposed boundary?
I'm surprised you didn't make a little line to that safer light though.
I just want to thank you for the lines around the proposed boundary. I think that what you said about Bridgeport Village and RV place is very relevant. I think that, you know, we always talk about there's money available for transportation projects through some of the grant work that we do have. And there's ways that we can fund those things as well. So I'm really impressed with how you determined these changes. And I'm also really excited about the trail system and the river access combination as well. Thank you for the work on it. I'm definitely in the VFS on this one.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I'm having, sorry, I'm having a hard time. I can't find where the removes the eliminated parts that you were talking, you like, show us again. Sorry, I just am trying to envision where we are.
So we'll start here. We initially. So we'll start here. We initially, you see this little line right there?
Yeah.
We included that area. So that was one in the original. We included the upper area of Bridgeport Village in the city of Twalton. That goes to the road right before the movie theater. So everything but the movie theater is basically the city of Twalton. And then the front part of the Moose's Amper is what we also had included right here. And so we, we removed those three areas and then added here, 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 and here.
Okay.
But nothing else has changed. So basically the rights have way expanded, but then we shrunk high value targets.
Thank you. I just wanted to remember about that.
And as we noted in your staff report, if there's a project that ever occurs outside the project boundary, council also has future options of how to remedy those issues. So if Southwest Corridor ever came back, you could extend the district through a major, a substantial amendment, or create a new urban renewal, if that was council's priority. But, so nothing in here should constitute any kind of concern that, oh, if we don't do X, we'll be limited in the future. You're not limited by no means.
So when we first looked at this, we had all that other property in. You have the capacity of all that property that we took out to be able to use in urban renewal in the future in a different area, if you decide you want to. So you have plenty of both acreage and assessed value. And when this comes back to you in September, it will show you exactly how much. But if, if for some reason another opportunity came up, you could either expand this district by 20% of its existing acreage, or you could create a new district. So yes, this was the original boundary.
So this is the area that we took out. So basically from here up and here, and then all of this we took out. And then we removed this parcel right here.
Or Whole Foods is, I'm sorry again, that course.
Whole Foods is right there, and that's not in the district. Basically right, do you know where the vacant lot between Grand Central and Whole Foods is? That vacant lot where they cut down the streets? That's where the urban renewal boundary starts. And then it, it, it doesn't include Bridgeport Village either. But, excuse me, Eddie Line, the western part of Eddie.
I also wanted to acknowledge, I had one more comment. I think it was in this, this part of the presentation that you guys talked about this, but connecting the transportation in with development is a really beautiful move. I come from a city that's Detroit, where transportation and development are never disconnected. And I mean, I know that cars rule there, but there's a reality about that that allows for a lot more free movement traffic. And things that we deal with here is not the same issue. So I just really applaud that move. And I think that that will give us some flexibility in the particular road system. And we know that our community is very invested, very concerned about that. So I just wanted to applaud that that included in there. I think that's where this is. Or in the, in the presentation with other road. Really to add that. That's it for me, but I approve, yes.
Anyone okay with the proposed boundary? Those are the core questions you need to answer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Almost back on schedule. Thank you both.
Thank you. Took us a while to get back here, but, okay.
And obviously, I won't say obvious.
All right. So that brings us to Council Roundtable and looking over the agenda tonight. I've got, Council Hillier, you're up with the pledge of allegiance tonight. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? We have no announcement other than the bind the wine, but Sue won't be here to do that announcement for bind the wine. And proclamation, none pledged, consent agenda, we've got that. All right. We'll go ahead and start the roundtable. We've got about 20 minutes. We'll start with Council Hillier.
Thank you. I attended the, our DEI work group last week and for session three, it is really moving along pretty exceptionally. I'll let Councillor Sacco add her comments. What I'd like to say is that, just a huge shout out to our staff, to Megan George and Betsy for their leadership, their thoughtfulness and planning, also to our city manager and the time that you've spent cultivating relationships in the community to make sure that these meetings go well, because we know, maybe I had, may have had a different opinion about how that was going to run. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your time and energy, and thank you to the city manager for entrusting it to such incredible people. I think the work is moving forward beautifully.
That's a correct.
I might have two things. On the 10th, I went to the last lunch concert on the Commons with Cal Scott, and it was great. And we had a pretty good turnout. It was a nice day. And then on the 17th, I had the Clackamas County Metro Subcommittee. And it was all about transportation, there's regional flexible funds allocations for Clackamas County, and we don't have any projects on the list, so that's that.
Okay, that's the rest.
Yeah, no official meeting in the last couple of weeks.
What's your Sacco?
I attended the forum meeting, which everybody just saw the outcome of that meeting. And I also attended the diversity, equity and inclusion planning committee with Council Hillier. And I agree with everything that she said. Megan, Betsy, Carolyn have just done an outstanding job with what can be a very sensitive topic. But they're doing a great job. So thank you for that. We laid the groundwork in our first couple of meetings. And then this last meeting, we really started to define the permanent group. So everything's coming together very nicely, and I can't wait to share all that work with all of you. Also attended the tolling diversion Subcommittee. We spent the majority of the time talking about cost models, affordability models, and how those costs will actually impact the diversion and how much diversion there's going to be based on cost. So very interesting discussion. They provided great feedback to the folks at ODOT and that are leading that charge. So anybody have any questions about that, let me know. I have lots of great information.
Well, I was able to chair the PAB meeting on the 11th and the vice chair, and our normal chair was out. And it happened to be Jenny Proctor's last meeting. So it was really a privilege to be able to read through all of her accomplishments over the last couple of decades as she served at the county and has been such a great leader with the PAB and all the grants, which I know that that the mayor and I share those opinions and that feeling about working with Jenny. So I just, Jenny Proctor, so I just wanted to mention that. And yeah, it was a privilege to be able to work with her. On Friday, I had a phone call, actually, after executive session, I did some research about what we had talked about, because there's a lot of information. And one of the people that I talked to, I've talked to several mayors in surrounding communities about what they're wanting to do. And I had a phone call with Evan Lamba, who's here today, and is going to be presenting from the Department of Land Use and Conservation, Conservation Land Use Department. I always get a big stop. And he said not to feel bad about it because nobody gets it straight. So I, I'm going to take that. But, so I hope that people listen to him. I had some email exchanges and a conversation. And for me, there is a lot of flexibility and role change and role making and ways that we can work. That conversation, and we want to welcome Evan tonight and invite people to look at our emails that we sent. Baseball game, let's see. Oh, I've just been doing a lot of, you know, it is election season. So I've been going to a lot of parties for people that are running for office and supporting candidates in our community. So just a shout out to everybody that's put their hat in the ring and is running and running for reelection here too as well. It takes a lot of energy and effort, and especially with positions like ours where we don't have big salaries or anything like that, to support those little extra efforts that we're doing. And I want to say, this is a personal note, I had a visitation at my home from Suzie, who's the director, Suzie Peterson of Backyard Habitat. And my yard is in process. And I see that from the Twelton Sustainability Network, I'm pleased to announce that we also were able to get an actual grant from the Walton Soil and the Soil Water Conservation District. And and the cool thing about that is that some of the money will be going to our city parks for and for to the Historical Society for improvements in the backyard habitat garden at the Historical Society and our first backyard habitat garden in our city public parks. I'm really proud of that. Really excited about that grant. And I hope that you guys are excited about that too. And I just wanted to thank Ross and the Parks Department for their great work together. I had a meeting with Rebecca on the 18th from the Water Consortium. And I was discussing our plumbing school and some of the things that I like to see the water consortium coming in for, that would be great for Twelton. So it was a productive conversation. And I'm looking forward to talking more about it as things get translated. And then we did the, I did go to the Wednesday meeting of, around the the Springfield, I was curious. And after going, I learned a lot by going, which was important to me. And and I'll talk more about my, my thinking around that since attending that meeting. But I wanted to thank our mayor for sending me the invitation I asked him to and for incorporating me so that I could attend that. And then I attended the Teddy Fever Concert on the Commons, the last one, on the 19th, which was really a lot of fun. And just, it's so nice to have our community out together again. And the whole concert season was just wonderful. It was fun to table with the other folks from the cities that were tabling for the Climate Action Plan. And I got to do stuff for Twelton Sustainability Network. And it was just a lovely collaboration. And we had wonderful sponsors and donors through the city and through through the organization. And have to keep looking. I decided not to do that one. Yep, here I am. That's it. Thank you.
That's President Grant.
I haven't had any official meetings that I've attended, or the council. But I did want to compliment staff from the Rec Department and everybody that's been involved in getting the concerts back on track. Because it's just so lovely to see everybody together and leaders and you guys always do such a fantastic job of putting those things on. It's just wonderful. Community Police Foundation, I have to acknowledge, because it's the first one that we had with our interim chief. And the ideas and things that he's up to are super exciting. And I can't wait to share more about it. I'm sure that Council Pratt will have some things to say as well. But and it was fun selling the dogs at the concert along with the rest of the stuff that I was up to. So I just want to thank him for his leadership and look out for an upcoming article that we're going to go write.
On the 9th, I also attended the core meeting, which again was a very productive meeting and very proud of the processes that he went through to engage our community. And we had tremendous amount of engagement there. On the 15th, the Washington County Coordinating Committee met, and our illustrious Mike McCarthy was elected to be the T-PAC alternate at, for the metro region for cities, replacing Julie from Sherwood, who moved on to become a city manager, I believe. So he will be joining us as the alternate. Maybe eventually we'll become the primary, as the primaries are going to retire pretty soon. So congratulations to Mike. One of the discussions that was kind of interesting was Metro presented their High Capacity Transit Update. They gave us a presentation, and then I knew what was going to happen. The mayor's asked, are you serious? You can't even provide service now. Why are you presenting high capacity transit options? We, you're pulling routes from, you know, over in Beaverton. And of course, you know, they're trying to plan in the future. One particularly pointed question was, you told us BRT wasn't possible on 99W that we had to have the Southwest Corridor, how to be real, but now you're saying BRT can be done? So is it, I love these Washington County Coordinating Committees, when Tri-Met or Metro comes present, because the Washington County mayors don't hold back. They ask tough questions and people know they're going to have to answer them. Final last thing we're doing is the county, we're going to draft a letter to the the Oregon Highway Transit Plan, the toll and congestion amendments. Clackamas County C4 has done, the city has done it. They want to make sure they get their two cents in because the option to write pro comment was extended. So Washington County Coordinating Committee is going to draft a letter, and it's going to riff off of our letter that we sent in Clackamas Counties. On the 17th, I had a GPI Board meeting. And the one I'm looking forward to most, because it's going to be interesting, is Wednesday, which is the first regional toll advisory meeting, the committee that has been formed for the region to come up with pricing, how we're going to handle folks who are low income and mechanisms of funding. It's about 25 people are on the committee. The facilitator met with each of us, resumed to, you know, basically, you know, do the meet and greet. They didn't have an idea where we're all coming from. So Wednesday, it's going to be an interesting afternoon, actually in the morning, in Portland, they're holding it at the New Hyatt Regency, next to Convention Center. So I'm looking forward to that, because I think there's going to be a nice amount of fireworks there too. And that's all I have. Anything else for this work session? All right, with that, we have about 10 extra minutes here. So go ahead and close this work session. We'll take a recess until seven o'clock for our city council meeting.